Lots of arguments.
Okay, live from New York.
I know, that's.
Tuesday night.
Or when you wanna say, come on down, I will see you're the next contestant on the Price is Right. But I've controlled myself this whole way.
Oh, come on.
I know, I don't know why.
Have a little.
I might do it next time, but I don't want to say it so bad.
Yeah.
Okay. This is me, Webster Planning Board in Webster, New Hampshire, on February fourth, two thousand twenty-five. The first thing we're gonna do is record attendance.
Dean Lampard.
Adam Maugh.
Marla Derek.
Craig Fornier.
Susan Youngs.
Teresa Fenimore.
And Russell Tetrault.
And anybody in the audience here?
Oh, I love that kind. You look wonderful today, yeah, thank you.
How many people come to the selectmen?
Well, there was quite a few last night.
Twenty-ish last night for the public hearing.
But we actually don't want very many anymore.
What was the, or war on last night?
Budget hearing.
We are. There's nothing exciting. Nobody wants to listen.
It wasn't that exciting.
No? It's good to hear.
Okay, so.
Is it easy?
We have a court on here tonight. So the first item is the driveway regulations, and I'm gonna tell what I know about this, and then so you can correct me. But we had a public hearing on revision to the driving regulations. And according to the RSAs of the state, as soon as you have a public hearing, it has to go before the town meeting. So we're gonna put it before the town meeting.
Well, driveway regulations don't have to go before the town meeting. The zoning amendments have to go before the town meeting. Driveway regulations, all we have to do is do a public hearing.
Another public hearing.
No, this public hearing. This is it.
This is it. So we're gonna revise this tonight.
So all we're doing is adding a little line that we're not gonna issue a state permit without, or wish you the town permit on a state road without the state permit first.
First, yeah.
That's the, that's the change.
Okay, which is the change we've been talking about.
Which is the change we've been talking about.
Any comments from the public?
I'm just his driver.
And that's why she brought the paper.
I'm a taxi service. Don't mind me.
Well, welcome.
So that's it, right?
So if nobody, there's no comments, then nobody's complaining about it, then you just approve the change, and then we're done.
Do we have a motion?
Do we need one?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Okay, I vote we approve the changes we made at our previous meeting to the driveway regulations.
Do you wanna read them off?
The whole thing?
No, this is.
The one change was in section B, number two, letter A. In the case of a driveway intersecting a state road, issuance of a state driveway permit shall be required before a town permit can be issued.
Second. Then you got a second on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done.
Yeah.
Now, the second one is what I was talking to you about.
Oh, zoning warrant recommendation vote. Well, go ahead, you tell us.
So that's the one with, so this is the one where we're changing the impact fee ordinance to add the three-year timeframe for them to change it. So I put it before our new attorney, or me and Dana did, because we're trying to shorten the language to make it fit better on the ballot for Mary, so we could cut down the ballot size, and we're having the attorney help us with the language. And the attorney says, well, this language is confusing, and it contradicts in one part of the ordinance. And the part of the ordinance where it contradicts is the discontinuation of a nonconforming use. So when a nonconforming use burns down, they have two years to replace it, and this says three years. So now we have two things that contradict each other. So we're gonna have to fix that next year.
How come they say two and not go with what we?
Well, the nonconforming use is say, somebody has a shed that's right on the property line that was there before zoning, and they never moved it.
Yeah.
And then it burns down. They have two years, they can replace it with it.
I think three would be.
Yeah, but we can't do that right now.
Well, two is the state, is the state.
Oh, the state, oh, good.
And we're adding so we could do it.
The three is the House, and that's where the contradiction comes in, is what if the House is a nonconforming use? Does it go to three years or is it two years?
But it was there.
Right.
Can we give an extension?
I don't know.
Well, 'cause I was thinking if it makes it easier, just keep it for the two years, as long as they have room to come back and say, hey.
I would say they would get an extension from the board for the discontinuance of the use, for the two years. I think that's possible. I would have to check.
I think we should put that in writing, in other words.
I mean, I don't know, did I just move something around? But I'm just thinking out loud that, you know, yeah, we don't need confusion.
That's what the attorney was saying, and he also thought the language should be clarified to say whether this is the construction needs to be done by the end of three years, or at least started by the end of three years. And that's the other recommendation.
So that, that makes sense, started by the end of three years.
That's what I assumed too, but he said the language isn't clear, you could interpret any of it.
What I would suggest, if you could have a better idea, is because the law says two years for nonconforming, you say, we changed this language to say two years, however they can apply for a three-year extension.
Well, it's something we can discuss, but the thing is, since we already had the public hearing and voted to move the language forward, it has to be on the ballot as it is.
Just the way it reads?
Just the way it reads currently. 'Cause I tried to say, well, can we just pull it from the ballot, 'cause we haven't finalized the ballot yet. He's like, no, you already had the public hearing and made a motion about it, so no, it's gotta go on.
So can we leave it like it says?
No, we're leaving the language right as it is.
The way it says.
The way it says currently, and then we're gonna have to address it this year for the next year's ballot.
But if we, I mean, three years is quite a, that's lengthy enough time to at least get started again.
Right, I mean, we're not, that isn't the issue, it's just the contradictory language that needs to be.
I get it, but.
That the state has, can overrule, overrules the town in a sense. I don't, which is, whatever. They gotta get kinda nosy every once in a while.
Well, yeah, they get their nosy mouth.
Really? I didn't know that, that much till I was a select person, how much they tell us what to do.
That's 'cause we're not a home world.
Huh?
We're not a home world state.
So I guess I wouldn't really qualify if you're a select.
The three years is okay for the state because it isn't more constrictive. If we wanted one year, then the state would overrule.
Then they could overrule it.
But where we say three, they don't.
So, but how come they tell us it has to be two?
Because that's what it was prior, we didn't address that part.
In the statute.
Oh, in ours, not in the, it's not the state, it was our, we came up with that. It was our statute.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Oh, I thought you were saying the state was the one that said the only.
I'm pretty sure this comes down to planning and how it's been adjudicated in the course.
Well, that makes sense, if she's saying if the town tries to get two.
They can't say one, but you can say three.
Yeah. So what, so all you're saying is we need to address this, that the nonconforming can be three too, just so.
Right.
I would do that, just to keep it simple.
So I'm gonna work with our attorney to get better language and come up with a way to fix it.
But, so this will be this, and then next, next, in the next session, in a sense, just do it that.
We'll just do it again.
Yeah. Not like a third.
Okay, everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
All right, and then the other thing was, we have to make our, as normal, the plan, the select board does their recommendation for each warrant article, the planning board has to do their recommendation for their warrant article. So you have to, does the planning board recommend this article? How many?
Which, which, both, the two articles?
Just the one.
Just the one that we just did.
The one that we move forward. Since it has to go on the ballot, we have to have the recommendation for it.
All right. Well, I think we should write it in. What do you think, Dean?
Yes.
And this is something that only the sitting board members can vote on, so it's only five of us.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the changes that we approved for.
The impact fee?
Yeah, yeah, the impact fee, so the impact fee.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's good, that was easy.
I think you've already lost the bet, but that's okay. That's gone. Yeah, your junk.
All right. Next one is I changed around the CIP. I added in all the new projects into the CIP plan.
Yeah.
And I also put in what the estimated trust fund balances will be at the end of each year, based on when I know the expenses are gonna be funded. I also put in the bonds payment, the predicted bond payments for the transfer station. And I was plugging around with numbers.
Does anybody know a little bit about that whole bond thing? Did you put the ten-year or the twenty-year?
We put the twenty-year, 'cause that's the numbers I have.
Is that bound for the?
Transfer station.
For the PFAS, please.
Yeah. Which we're supposed to possibly, well, I think we're all gonna go to the next meeting, which is Monday. Because the way it's set up, Dave explained it so much nicely, I'm gonna put, the DES is set up as this low-interest loan, like one percent, but it's only over a ten-year period. And our portion, you know, in the, but the town of Hopkinton wants to do it over a twenty-year, which then the interest rate changes after ten years. So pretty much, we almost get an interest-free loan if you stay within the ten-year.
Right.
Right? They said that, right?
Yeah, 'cause the loan's locked in at whatever interest rate we're taking on it.
So if Webster pays us off in ten, we're cool.
Well, so we have to find, well, so we're, that's why we're going on Monday, because we wanna make sure that we can, you know, hey, Hopkinton wants to take twenty years, that, and cost themselves not much more money, because they probably have different. We've done a good job being frugal.
Right.
Okay, let's just, that's what it boils down to. And so our frugality has made it so that we can have a bond at a ten-year period, plus it's not as much on our back anyways. And that way you get the low interest rate, and, you know, you pretty much aren't in money for nothing. But we don't, we're not sure if that's going to be allowed.
And I think the other good point that's brought up, we were talking about it today with Dana's, was it Warner using the transfer station at one point? So why aren't they paying anything for the PFAS lineup?
Didn't they vet date when they got out, didn't that cost them money at, when, when they were all overdone with and moved theirs, built their own transfer station? I thought that they got all settled up at that point.
Meaning like they had to buy their way out?
Way out of.
Well, that's something to look into, but otherwise it's also something to be noted.
Well, that's something that, I mean, we've been discussing, it's 'cause it doesn't make a lot of sense if they were also part of the polluting, that they should also have to pay, even if it's not the polluter.
Even if they settled up, they wouldn't have known that there was, because we didn't know.
Right, we didn't, so what, last year?
Yes, and it's, it's substantial.
Off of the three pounds, and, you know, I don't know how long they were part of the lagoons portion of it, but they would get a rate based on what they were part of. Which is an unhappy fight to have, but.
Well, fair's fair.
Fair's fair.
Well, come over, take them over.
That's like way too many headaches up there.
That may be true, my friend.
Yeah.
But the way the money worked out is if you did the twenty loan, if you put fifty thousand into the transfer station with the projects we have right now, every year, to the trust fund, it would about cover it all the way about to the last three years, and then you'd have to put like a thousand more in.
But that's based on the twenty-year.
But that's based off of the twenty-year.
Did you do it if there was just ten?
I don't have those numbers, so I can't. I need to know what the numbers would be.
Yeah.
So this sort of has to, we have to figure this out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the other one, I talked to Emmett about it today, is I put the road numbers into it, and we need to work with Emmett on the projects to figure out how to get the road funding to work.
Yeah, he's been funding in past years at two hundred thousand.
Right, we have the cost of the projects, and then if we do one project a year, the numbers don't add up. So we have to figure out what we can do and what the priorities are, and talk to Emmett about it, and see how we can make the numbers work.
Okay.
And I think that's a discussion for next year's CIP.
Okay.
I don't think it's this year.
Where, where is the selectmen in all this budget stuff?
Well, we have already more or less approved everything, well, last night we kinda did that, correct? Last night, the public hearing, and there was really no changes, and for what we came up with.
Next year could be a whole different.
So these numbers that he's talking about are for next year, really?
Well, it'd be.
Well, this year's taken care of, so it's really a next year issue.
I just wanted.
Twenty twenty-five, right? That's what.
That's what this is here.
Right. But next year, twenty twenty-six, could be a whole different.
Ballgame, and I think we should start to like do a little bit of more forecasting and planning into the future of some of these expenses. And I was also gonna get, wanted to get some feedback to see if you liked the format, did it make sense to have the trust funds below it, so you're not looking at a different page?
I need a mic, you know, my.
I know, I'm sorry, I don't have.
Also, you've got to understand those youngies over here.
Well, some of them are bigger, the formats all the same.
This one?
Well, I don't know, can you see it?
Yeah, I can't.
Well, you've got better glasses than me, maybe I need to go back to the eye doctor.
Home Depot.
No, this, he's got a table here.
Oh, 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 I thought you meant on this one.
Oh, I meant on these tables.
Yes, we can read those. I can read these.
Mostly fire department, with bridge and culvert, fifty thousand, and then the rest of it's for the fire department.
I gotta talk to Emma to see if they buy air packs and stuff like that. And I gotta fix something with the cruiser, 'cause I talked to Phil to ask when the next cruiser's gonna be, bother skipping this year, and then they're gonna go back to whenever the other year's scheduled. And that's the plan.
And their cruisers are gonna make it another year?
Yeah. We actually have fairly up-to-date cruisers.
Up-to-date cruisers, and they're trying to.
'Cause one got in the accident, so.
Not use one as much as the other ones, so they can stretch it out a little bit longer. Trying to get us back to the regular schedule.
Okay.
So that was that. And I just wanted to get the CIP approved. So I'll post it on the website, so people can look at it.
Okay. Do we need a vote, Emmett?
Yeah.
I'd like to, to move to approve the CIP as included in the packet.
I'll second that. All in favor of the CIP as presented?
Aye.
Aye. You and Emma, Miss.
Well, and Dana also thought it might be nice if somebody came to the select board and presented the CIP. I said I would mention it, that's really up to you guys.
Well, the logical person.
Oh, I can't present it myself.
As he said, well, you guys do a lot of good work, and somebody should present it to the selectmen.
You've done, you've done a lot of good work, Emma.
Right.
You could be the representative.
You're the man.
And that was it.
All right, future discussion.
I just wanted to get some direction, if there's anything you wanna be looking at for future zoning changes for this year, that I can do some research on and get back, maybe have everybody think about it before the next meeting, send me an email if there's anything, any ordinance you wanna look into.
I don't think so. I noticed that the state, you know, we, we have restrictions on auxiliary, auxiliary housing units. And the state is concerned about availability of housing. You wanna make a city, you can have detached building on your property. So that may be coming down the pike, I don't know.
Well, what do they wanna do?
They wanna allow.
Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling units.
By right, instead of, and not allow the towns to make a permit requirement for it.
So give a little example, somewhere or less, you have your house, and you put another build in here, so that you could.
Well, the buildings would have to be attached.
Right now, right now, they have.
Right now, no, I think they still would have to be attached for an ADU.
Okay.
But the, the change, this is at least how I understand the changes, they would no longer have to get a permit from a zoning board, there would, it would not be a special exception, all ordinances throughout the entire state would allow ADUs by right on any property within a certain size, and they could just build one.
So more, more or less, if you wanted to look at it like an in-law apartment, you wouldn't have to go in front of anybody, you could just do it.
You could just do it.
You still need a building permit, wouldn't you?
That's the catch, I'd have to look more at the laws, but I would assume you still have a requirement for a building permit.
They're opening up a pretty good can of worms with that one, aren't they?
Lot of towns are against it, so.
Maine, actually, I think allows an ADU that does not have to be attached on any property. 'Cause my daughter and her husband live in Portland, and they have a very small lot, but they could actually put a little additional.
Mini home.
Yeah. They've thought about it just for their own use, 'cause her house is so small, they could put a little, like exterior studio that.
Read fairy.
Yeah.
But.
Times two, right?
I mean, ours, our lot size is also big.
Yeah.
And when we tried to change it, we ran up against, nobody wanted to do it, so I mean, where are people gonna build houses?
Nashville, Concord.
You gotta watch this now, you know.
Well, I, I love, I love the rural. You know, it's like I would hate, I hate to see it happen, but.
It's not gonna happen on my nickel, I can tell you that.
Well, if you were, if you were the supreme ruler.
So how many grandparents you have?
Yeah, right.
How many grandkids?
Kids, yeah, grandkids, yeah.
Leaving it all, I have six, and I have six houses for them.
That's right, see.
What, what happens if you, if you, if you're not a land baron like you?
They're gonna have to start, just like I did, with nothing. Right?
Right, but your grandchildren don't have to start with nothing.
No, I, I, that, the reason it be is 'cause it's, they're all, everything's near me. And some of the neighbors I did not get along with when they signed a south. Time for them to go. And some of them were good neighbors and wanted me to have the house too, you know, that I bought, a couple of them. So that's why I did it. But I like my rural life the way it is.
I like mine. All by myself out there on all that land, I love it.
Yeah, you should. It's nice up there.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Well, with that being said, if, you know, you have the property and you wanna be able to have somebody live on the property with you, live free or die, is what we're supposed to be. But that's, but I, I, I'm the same way, I mean, I love where I live, I don't, I'm old, you know.
The drawback, you know, the drawback is that it's like, like when a pocket, you know, these summer homes and hunting camps get transformed into permanent homes, and then you have problems. And then what happens if, you know, you build five houses, right? And your son's excited, oh, I'm gonna go to Arizona, right, and sell off his thing. And all of a sudden, you have no control over.
But that probably won't happen.
Well, see, he's just got special things.
You have special ways you deed that, right?
Right.
You wanna sell, you go, you can sell, but not the house. That will be right there, just the way it is.
Okay, but I'm just saying.
Oh, I, I know what you're telling me. That, that's just like what, what I, what I say with that development, a little help. That's why that road, when they get ready to do that, that needs to be right up to town specs, no problem, because if something goes haywire, and all of a sudden they get fist-biting, and next thing you know, they're shooting at each other. Then.
Stop talking to your own family.
You have a little problem.
We'll send you up to smirn it out.
So, so, I mean, but I, I get, I get where you're coming from, you know, you.
It is a fine line. We're very lucky to live where we live, I think.
The question is, not now, right, the question is twenty years down the road.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen here?
Yeah.
And is it gonna be a problem for the town?
Yeah. Well, that's, that could, you know, I mean, if you start putting two places on one lot, and next thing you know, they wanna add on to some more, and that little bungalow turns into a mansion, and it's full of kids.
Right.
Well, or. That's how we all started.
Think about somebody like me who lives by myself.
Yeah. Oh, I, I.
The thought of being able to have an accessory dwelling unit where I could live.
That's right, and that's all I get.
And say one of my kids could live in the main house.
Yeah. I, I get that too, and that, that's, 'cause I, you know, see, I've seen it.
Yeah.
And gone through it, you know, I know just what you're saying, as far as, you know, I see my mother.
Or, yeah, but where you, where you look at, like, the generation of, you know, our, my kids, which are in the twenties to thirties, right? Them to afford to live anywhere? So we've kidded, you know, we've got the barn and the pool, and I'm like, God, we could put up little houses for all you guys to live out in, just 'cause, you know, they, they got jobs, they're, they're good kids, but it's, it's not there, I mean, I know a couple of my son's friends just spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a house that I'd be like, oh.
Yeah, the mortgage payment on that.
Well, that and the house itself, it's like.
And the house isn't, and.
That's what, yeah, I didn't wanna say that really like.
Doesn't seem like it's really worth that.
But that, and that's, that's where I feel, um, but how do you stop that? I mean, you do what someone, you, you, you get adopted by Addie. Um, so, anyhow, so you know you got a place to live. I always kid about that. But, um, same here, you try to be at the right place at the right time, but that's not always what happens. So you, you really feel for the, this, that generation, yeah.
I know.
Oh, it's gonna, it's tough.
And if we all die out and bring no, no generation in, then that's a little, the town might not be here anyway. So I don't know. But it's a fine line. We, we, um, fortunate in, like you said, it probably could change a lot of family land, including yourself, and people around town that are able to do that for their families, 'cause they were, you know, started a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, to, to go out to do it today, I probably, it would be a little tough.
Yeah. And you know, the other thing that's a real bummer, but then you don't, is the, the, the whole little thing we just went through, you know, COVID. And, uh, you know, where I grew up on Lake Sunapee, to buy a place on Lake Sunapee, you've got to be hoping you got a million-dollar job, and it, that's, that to me is the sad part about it. Not that you don't want people to move in, but the people moving in are coming to change everything. And that's why they move here. So that's, that's a problem. So you, in some senses, wanna be able to make it affordable for your generation, your family that lives here, that knows the way we were brought up, which is different than states around us. But I'm not gonna solve that problem.
I still, I still, I mean, we taught, we've talked a little bit about cluster development, I wouldn't mind more, more information about some of the options for something like that. I don't know that we'd ever pass it, but it's worth, I would like to know what are some of the ways people have, towns have uh, made zoning that allows something that's.
Well, you know how you talk about cluster, that, to me, a little bit what the state's saying is like under that same idea. Here you have your property, and you could put another home to help you afford your property. I, you know, yeah, I mean, I, one of, one of the, one of the kids will probably have a rental unit, 'cause totally, you know, the wages you need to support yourself in this day and age are not what they were again when we were grown up or young adults. So I like, so cluster development, being allowed to put, and maybe you, maybe could, could we make restrictions, and like, like we already have the five-acre lot? You know what I mean? Maybe on a five-acre lot, you're only allowed one exterior building.
You look to do it.
Well, I'm gonna move on here.
Yep.
Right, 'cause we're not gonna solve that today.
Any other new business? I talked to Rob Malinsky this week, and I asked him to take over my job, which was going with. I talked to Rob Malinsky this week, and I asked him to take over my job, which was going with Emmett to look at driveways.
Good.
And he agreed, so we have to have one member of the planning board and Emmett do like a driveway, so he said he'd do that.
It's good to hear.
Yeah. So.
The lengthy minutes from the last meeting need approval.
I screwed up, apparently.
Yeah, there was one error, it said we adjourned at six oh one.
I saw that.
I saw that too, yeah, yeah, before it started.
I thought, wait, did we start at six? Did I forget something? So would that change?
So, we just need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our January meeting as amended.
We have a second?
Well, Dean was the only one who was here.
I was gonna say, I can't.
All in favor?
Did anybody show up after we left?
I don't know, I wasn't.
You weren't, you didn't, okay, well, nobody else, I was the only actual planning board member here, so we had our two alternates who were made up enough for a quorum.
For a quorum.
And we said, but what's gonna happen, you know, at six thirty-one, we're out of here, somebody's gonna show up and say, where's the planning board?
Sounded like you did an excellent job.
I know.
Easiest meeting ever.
That was pretty funny.
You get the shortest meeting award.
So far, you never know.
All right, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not bad.
Look at that.
I'm gonna go home and take a nap.
Take a nap.
I had a late night last night.
Oh, yeah.
So was tonight's school board meeting.
Yeah, you'll be there next.
Is that, so what are they doing voting on?
The budget.
Oh, boy.
So are they, the one that they vote on tonight will be what, where, are we passing it tonight or next year?
That's a good question, I know that we all should probably be there.
Right.
No, I don't.
Sit at the high school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When's that start?
Now. Yeah.
I don't think I'm gonna go.